Evening call to order the Town of St. John Plan Commission Study Session for April 2nd, 2025. Would invite all that are able to stand for pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get the roll call, please?
Joe Gomez Tagel.
Here.
Rudy Bambic is absent. John Gill.
Here.
Russ Vogel.
Here.
Justin Nuster.
Present.
Colin Entway.
Present.
Ashley Abernathy, present. Adam Decker.
Present.
John Dykstra.
Here.
Bill Manisoplin.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Good evening, everybody. Agenda item four, old and new business, item A, 2025-04, the gates of St. John, units 32 through 40, proposed primary plat for residential development located east of Blaine Street between 93rd Avenue and 101st Avenue, LBL Development. Good evening, Mr. Kell.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out in this terrible night. I have advertised for public hearing in two weeks. I've gotten most, I have the white cards here for Ashley if she would like them, and I am collecting green cards right now. Signs have been posted on the property. They're posted in two locations. They're posted on 93rd and 101st since large Ashley asked that we post two signs this I did email Ashley the latest and greatest set of plans. I can tell you by the time this week ends, we will, we'll make sure that everything complies with the annexation agreement that was approved by the town council. It's kind of fairly lengthy. What you're looking at on the board right there, those are the age-restricted units. Those are the single-family homes that Mr. McFarland will be building. So Ron is going to take care of that area, and that's going to be obviously phase one. We, we've had a lot of, it's taken a lot of time to actually hydraulically model the ditch there and everything for the bridge that's going to have to be put in, and we've, that's taken some time. But the permit has been applied for to the DNR. We're going to need one of those, so the, the stormwater's been a little bit challenging on this, but we're getting through it, and Adam McAlpine has reviewed everything, has reviewed the bridge drawings. That eventually will be in the county bridge inventory, so the town typically doesn't worry about bridges ever. Those are, the county has a cumulative bridge fund that takes care of those. So that will be done. Like I said, I emailed a new set of drawings to Ashley today that they've been working on, so I suspect there'll be one more set that will be forthcoming in about another day, which will be the final set of plans. But just so you know, this has been reviewed weekly by the engineer because it's just a big project. So I'm anticipating that we should have a letter for you available at the public hearing, which will be in two weeks, obviously. So if any of you have any questions right now, love to answer them.
Questions, comments, anyone?
It kind of got caught in the, the bridge you were talking about, the metro bridge, the county bridge. Where's it located again?
Joe, it's, it's going to be right...
Well, okay, there you go.
This is, this is actually a lateral right here.
Right.
The bridge is actually going to be right in this area, right here.
Okay.
So this is, this traverses a tremendous amount of water. That just does.
So the bridge has a lot to do with your project, but then the county is going to maintain the cost of that bridge?
What, what, right. Every bridge in town right now.
Okay.
Is under the county jurisdiction. So the county actually has a tax rate attached to their cumulative bridge fund. That's why the county takes care of bridges. And I didn't know if anybody, there may be something new to the Plan Commission, that the, that that actually takes place, but over all the years, every bridge. Okay. That's all.
Hey, Steve, how are you getting water over there?
There, we're going to tie into Tiburon and down south to the gates and loop the system through.
Okay. No dead ends?
No.
Mike did review this and had no comment.
Okay. No, we can't have dead ends here, so.
In, in the amount of water that this is going to be using, have you've already kind of made an estimate?
Well, what, what's going on now, and I don't know that the Plan Commission knows this, but the town just bid out wells eight and nine. Funny story here, I actually dug those wells when I was town manager. That's how long they've been going on. So well eight and nine now, went out to bid, bids have been received, Billy can attest this, so what the town is going to be able to pump now, once those wells come online, will be just as touch over 10 million gallons a day, which far exceed what the average daily usage is of the town, Joe.
So then you have, you have, I asked for an estimate on how much water usage that kind of a community would use. That's all?
It's, it's running about...
You don't have, if you could kind of...
Well, at full buildout, I can do that real quick. It only takes a second to do.
All right, okay, wonderful.
So, I think so. About 151,000 gallons a day.
And the sewage, where would it be going? Where is the sewage going to go?
To, to Sherrville.
To Sherrville.
Yes.
That's an estimated cost to us, isn't it, or?
Well, the town as a whole, okay? Sherrville wastewater treatment plant has plenty of capacity. It's about 60% capacity right now. So Billy is, I know, working with the town of Sherrville, and to buy another 10% capacity, that will take us up to 30% capacity in the wastewater treatment plant. Forty, I'm sorry, 40. We bought 10% more in 2016. The town will purchase another 10% in 2026. That's when the actual first capacity purchase of 10% will expire. There's already a rate in place in the town here, which was set in 2016, to pay for that additional capacity, so it'll just roll another 10%. But there is, there is plenty of capacity at the wastewater treatment plant without the need to do an expansion.
And would that maintain the same sewage rates then for everybody in town?
The sewage rates shouldn't go up. There's no need to increase the rates, Justin, so just because there's already a rate in place to pay for that. I mean, I, the town pays around 17,000 a month? But then... The waste water treatment plant's not cheap. It's very expensive.
Oh, no, I get that. I'm just asking, you know, that, that is it, does it increase for everybody, or, you know, as far as the rates go? But if the rate, if the rate itself stays the same, then all the new users who are coming into that are paying for what they're using, which that's probably the extra 10% that we're...
Well, the, the new users, every building permit fee pays a wastewater treat, treatment plant capacity expanded, capacity fee. That stays in a fund until such time as there's a need to upgrade the plant. Then whatever that bill is, St. John gets 40% of it, Sherrville pays 60. Or if there's a point where the plant needs to be upgraded for only St. John, St. John would pay for the upgrade of the wastewater treatment plant. But that's why we have that wastewater treatment plant expansion fund, because it gets paid into for 10 years. So by the time you actually need to use the money, you have several million in that account. That's what it's for. That's why nobody ever touches that account.
You can't touch that account, right?
Oh, no, no. That, that account is absolutely off limits because it is used strictly for wastewater treatment plant expansions. That was set up, Joe, in 2000, and I want to say 2001 is when we initiated that account, and it's been there ever since and has never been touched, except for wastewater treatment plant expansions. Or let's say they wanted to upgrade, they just upgraded this, the sludge storage building that had been there since 1960. Well, it was nice. They sent the plans, they sent the cost to St. John, St. John was able to write a check because of that fund and how the town controls, and they actually watch their money.
It's like a savings account.
A savings account for big, big items.
For a specific purpose, right? I mean, just...
Right, and it's, it's kind of how the fire department uses their CUMFIRE fund. If they want a new fire truck, save a couple of years of money, and you've got $800,000, $900,000 in that fund. Reestablish it every three years, and you don't lose any money in it. And then when the fire department needs to make a big purchase, those are all those CUMFunds. That's what they're there for. And St. John's, they're very judicious how those funds are watched, though, and Bill is becoming very well acquainted with all these funds since he became town manager, so. But it's just things like that, the Plan Commission just probably doesn't even, is really, would never know, you know?
So just so the Plan Commission is where every new home permit is charged $1,379 for sewer treatment capacity charge. Every new commercial project is required to give us a minimum of one year's worth of water utility bill, where we then take out how much usage they have for that year, calculate it based off of that $1,379, and then charge them. It's a higher rate. So we're always collecting that, with every new home. So every single home in this development would pay that $1,379.
And I, I can understand the, the process of the cash flow that needs to occur to maintain that excess amount of prop, residential improvements in that, in this whole thing, but my concern is always just getting too crowded too fast for us.
Even prior to the 10% increase that, that we're working on, Joe?
Yes, sir.
We were nowhere near capacity, even if this came online overnight. So our, our capacity, even without the 10%, would suffice for, for this project. And I can, I can shoot you those numbers. I have it all broken down.
I can swing by another.
It's kind of like drilling well eight and nine. When you're using, pumping 7 million gallons of water, it's nice to be able to pump 10. And it's always kept ahead, and, and like I said, St. John's always done a tremendous job with the utility system, so, and I, and that's, you know, credit to like everybody, so it's always ahead of the curve. And remember, when you add, I used to always tell everybody, every home is a little cash register. When you put that meter in there, you're collecting water bills and sewer bills, so it's just like how Indian Americans always trying to buy everybody's water system. They want to build their customer base, because then all of a sudden you have more cash flow rolling in, so you don't need to increase rates as often. I mean, this town has gone 15 years at a time without increasing rates sometimes, so, because you have more customers, right?
It's a function, what you're saying.
It's a business.
It's not a business, it's a function, and that's why the rate does not increase. So it could be because we have more base, and then the levy will actually just change, but, or the rate.
Right, the, I was talking about rates, but yeah, as your, as your assessed value rises, your tax rate decreases. I mean, and Joe, you were, you were, you know that better than anybody.
No, that's, I'm just asking these questions.
Sure. No, I think it's good to ask these questions because we're probably going to have a lot of these in two weeks, though, too. Water, sewage, traffic.
Traffic is another one.
But those are the questions that I'm anticipating that we're going to have in the context of a public hearing, so I want to make sure that myself and everybody else is properly educated about that so we can respond accordingly. So, any other questions, comments?
I've, I've got a couple. So I, I see five phases, is that correct, or is there more, or are there more than five phases?
I believe there are five, yes.
And what is the timeline on that? Like, is it a phase a year? Do we know? I mean, I'm, I'm sure it's based on some kind of like growth or...
A decade.
A decade.
A decade.
Okay. Something like this, this large, obviously.
This is a decade project, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, it's...
It's a monster.
Yeah, it's, it...
Yeah.
It takes forever. It's, it's, it's a decade project, yes.
Sure, yeah, it's, it's, and so I counted 510 units, is that correct?
There's, I believe, 604 is what it's...
604, okay.
455 townhomes.
Plus 132, where...
134 age-restricted and 12...
134, right.
Uh, non-age-restricted altogether total, so that's...
Was it 602, right? 604, Ashley? I wrote that down. Hold on, I have it right here, too.
601.
601.
601, okay.
It was close. Yeah, no... Well, and there's, and the thing is, when you, when, as you do the engineering, there's units that keep getting cut because detention needs to be bigger.
Sure.
So you got to cut units, but it's approved for a maximum amount of, I think, 604 is what was approved?
Yeah.
We're not going to hit that, right?
Right, yeah, I, I assume it would cut down because right now we're showing just straight, you know, straight lots and everything.
Once the engineering gets done, they always cut into the units because that's a function of it.
And so in relation to, comparison to what the gates is currently at, just for, I'm trying to get my head around it, how, what, what is the size comparison right now?
Of the traditional gates, that was, came in in 2003, I think.
Three or four, yeah.
And the gates east, I think you're at 2,600 homes?
Okay.
Give or take a few.
Okay.
I don't, I live in there, I don't count.
Yeah, I just, and I, I don't, and I live, I live in Bramblewood, so I, like, I don't, I'm trying to get my, my head around it. Well, I get, I get there, I have friends who live there. I'm just trying to get my head around the, just the sheer size of this.
And I, and I think that it's important for the Plan Commission to know that Indot is actively working on 231 and the roundabouts right now. They originally wanted to start with Parish. I think now they're going to start with Klein, then go to Parish, but they have, we've been in contact with them consistently to get these, you know, because that's how I know the roundabouts are really taking a priority with them right now. So it's actually good to see the highway, State Highway Department working in the community now. That will help a lot.
And they've been out there doing utility work the past couple of weeks, at Klein. I assume that's what that was in prep for, so.
Yeah, that's supposed to start here quickly.
Went out to bid.
Decades seem to, decades, make it seem to come real quick, you know, so that...
I mean, it's, it's a 25, it's a 25-year project that's still going, Joe, you know?
I mean, it's, it's a, the project size, I mean, that, that makes sense. Could you tell me more about like the age restriction, age restricted homes and things?
Right, the age restricted homes, you have to have, you have to be 55 or older in order to own one of the units.
Great.
Okay. There are no school-aged children allowed at all.
Okay.
I'm happy to tell you, I am 55 now, so I actually live in the age restricted now, which my kids love to point out to me. So you can have, as long as the homeowner, so what we have is, we have to monitor that for the rest of time. So every two years, there is a survey that's put through the community. So for instance, let's say they close now on units. At closing, there is an age-restricted survey form that must be completed. So what we're seeing is, is we're seeing a lot of, almost nobody under the age of 55. You're allowed 20%, 80% have to be age-restricted by law, but we're, we're at almost 98%. So yeah, when you look at everybody, there's 66, 67, of, sometimes you'll get maybe a mother-daughter, where the daughter will maybe be 45, but the mom then is 65, 66, that's the actual owner. But in no instance have I ever seen any kids come in, ever. And we have that right now, and it was so popular, the town council actually mandated that this section be age-restricted.
Okay.
During the annexation process. They, they, they forced it, but because it was so popular, and it, it filled up, they were selling very quickly.
I'm, I'm sure, yeah. Cool. Uh, thank you, that's...
And then the annexation documents, all the age-restricted forms, and all of the survey work and everything, that was all written and presented as part of the, part of the process, just so you know. Ashley does have that on file if you ever want to see it.
Great. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? I had one more. Did it come in annexed, just because I didn't look at that agreement? For zoning-wise, you're, you're sat, you don't need to make any changes or anything?
No.
Okay. And I assume that's why we're just at primary plat then?
Justin, and Ashley, ad nauseam, goes through these plans to make sure that they're correct, believe me. So...
Just want to make sure. All right.
Yes.
Now, if there's no other questions, then I, we will see you back in two weeks.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for your time.
I will have comments for you tomorrow, Steve.
Well, I'm probably going to come see you tomorrow, then.
Tomorrow, Monday.
Item B, 2025-09, Grace Church, NWI subdivision, proposed primary plat and site plan for a proposed ministry center to be located at 13809 West 109th Avenue, St. John, Indiana. Grace Church, applicant, Mr. Huss, good evening.
Good evening. I'm here tonight on behalf of Grace Church. I wanted to take the opportunity at tonight's study session to go into a little more detail on a project that's going to be coming for the Plan Commission in the next, next couple of months. I know PBS Design Build brought this before the Plan Commission in the past. Obviously, we've been taking steps to move forward and have some greater detail on the work that's been ongoing. For those that aren't aware, Grace Church currently holds services out of Iliana Christian High School on Sunday mornings, and is very looking, very much looking forward to constructing their, their standalone facility. The church currently owns approximately 10 acres on the north side of 109th, east of the intersection of Calumet Avenue. It's the parcel just west of the Landheim Dog Training, Dog Boarding and Training Facility. This, I know, I know in the past, some other religious users have looked at this property. It is already incorporated in the town, Zone C2. It's currently vacant agriculture, agricultural. We've taken a lot of time to master plan the site because as any church endeavors on a build, they don't just look forward to today, they look forward to expansion in the future. Their initial building is approximately 11,000 square feet and intends to provide 161 parking spaces, and the site's going to be, Ashley, if you could scroll forward to the site plan. That'll do it, thank you. Currently planning 161 parking spaces with the provisions for, if they expand in the future, to provide a kind of, kind of append-on additional parking spaces to the, closer to the US 231 and to the east, which is on the bottom of this page you see here. I will commend them, they did find a great piece of property to purchase. It's a very, very clean design, it's at a peak of 109th Avenue, so all, all drainage goes due north, very little, little chance or instance for impacts to neighboring properties. They will be installing a large detention facility in the north or rear section of their property that is sized not just for today, but also tomorrow, as they hopefully years from now expand their facility and parking. So, and that, that butts a stream that continues further north through the Greystone and Saddle Creek subdivisions. The, the use is compliant with the C2 district. We do not expect to be petitioning BZA for any design variance, so it should be a very by-the-book development. We have had some staff-level meetings with the town on a couple of topics. From a utility standpoint, when Iliana Christian came onboard, they did install a sanitary sewer along 109th Avenue, which we will be using for the ministry center. We intend to extend an existing eight-inch main that's dead-ended from the Greystone subdivision south through the property on the western boundary. We will be positioning that within a public utility easement, should the town or another user want to come down 109th and complete that connection. We already touched on providing for the future. We intend site access to come from 109th Avenue via a full-access driveway that you can see here. While it probably won't be in the, let's say, 10, 15 years from now, this section of 109th Avenue is still under Lake County jurisdiction, so we've done, done a good bit of early coordination with the Lake County Highway Department. Dwayne Alverston requested a traffic study, so we did, we did complete counts on Sunday morning, on a Sunday morning, when the church will be operating. And it was found that, given the, the level of traffic at that time of day, on that day of the week, that the, a right turn lane into the development was sufficient, and that the need for, say, a left turn lane was unnecessary. Give, again, specifically because it is a Christian church and it does operate only on Sunday mornings. But to touch on that a little further, which, and that study has been provided to town staff and their engineer. The, the other wrinkle that we have is, there's obviously some master planning done in the past on Grace Church's property. There is a 60-foot ingress egress easement on, on their property on the east side. Obviously, somebody intended at a, at some point in time, landtime might transition in use, so if, if we flash forward 15, 20 years, the site can easily accommodate converting that driveway into a right-in, right-out, and then if somebody were to put a road in that east side, then the site could then gain their full access via that. So I think there's, I think there's been some good homework done from a traffic perspective, which was touched on during the, the last presentation. I think that's about all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions. We're just, again, trying to take the opportunity to get ahead of things before things become more official in the very near future.
Questions, comments? What's your anticipated timeline at this point? I'm not going to hold you to it, but just, you know?
Right now, obviously no idea on, on future expansions, but I think right now we're looking at 2026 construction.
Okay. I remember the initial presentation where they were fundraising and still pretty early on in the process, so I didn't know how far along it was.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, it's just, really just getting the, the initial build of the 11,000 square feet at least approved by the town, and then we'll kind of go from there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, 2025-10, Park West, petition to amend the zoning map of the St. John, Indiana Plan Commission's jurisdictional area by reclassifying from C2 District to PUD District located Calumet Avenue and approximately 193.5 feet south of 101st Avenue.
Yes, I did actually prepare a packet for everybody to...
I forgot, I'm in my office.
One job. Anyway, everybody should have a nice blue folder or a red folder, but I guess we can go through this then.
If you want, I can go over.
All right, Ashley owes me one for that one, then. I went through and Ashley did these myself, so I'm kind of proud of them. Anyway, let's go, I guess, where we're at here. We have, everybody, so you're familiar with, Exchange, obviously, is up here, and everybody takes Illinois. The little school is here, and stuff like this, a little playground back here. This is the bank right here, Providence Bank. Below, actually down here, is, this is Greystone, down here. This actually is St. John Commons, where the Great American Bailey was at. This is all owned by this school, all this property right here. There's detention here, detention here. There are some wetlands and stuff like that that are down here and a little bit in the back. This is all unincorporated right here, so it's kind of surrounded, and you'll notice that we intentionally are not doing anything close to anybody that lives down here. We left this 180-foot completely alone, so we can actually be away from everybody and kind of be isolated. You're going to notice that there is a lot that faces Calumet Avenue if, when you get your nice little drawing like this, you're going to see actually kind of what it looks like around it. This lot is a fire station lot that is going to be deeded to the town for the future construction of a fire station. We are going to fully improve that lot. We're going to build the pad to, for the fire station to be built on. We're going to run all the utilities to it, so then the town will be ready to go whenever it so chooses that. Eventually, on the west side of town, there probably will be a satellite station, just planning for future growth, things like that. There is a bike trail that Brad, I'm sorry, St. John Commons, Brad Lambert is the guy, that Brad is running. We are going to pick that bike trail up, we're going to run it through our property and connect into Providence Bank, so there's a complete sidewalk and trail system that is to provide all the connectivity. Should anybody want to walk over to any of the businesses or ride their bike, it'll connect all through Saddle Creek, all through our development, so we are going to continue that trail system. The request here is for a planned unit development. These will be, I want to say, custom townhomes. We're going to have two builders in this development. We're going to have two builders in this development. We are going to have Blackburn Builders, who is in the process, like I said, completely different product. We're going to have Ron McFarland build a section, and we're going to have Blackburn build the other section. So these will be completely different from anything that you've seen. I did include some of the elevations in with your packets, but Ashley will make sure you get those so you can actually see what everything's going to look like. So that's kind of like, in a nutshell, the proposal of what we plan on doing there. And see if, we're surrounded by residential on the south, all around. And like I said, we decided to develop commercial lots, we wanted to develop a site for a fire station.
How many units?
We're going to, the ask is going to be not to exceed 160. We're probably not going to get that many when the engineering gets done. It always tends to go down. It never goes up because that would be the maximum that would be requested, not to exceed this amount, this number. And again, these will probably be at a little bit higher price point than you're used to, we're used to seeing here for this type of unit, simply because of proximity to Illinois. We're looking, we're looking forward to that, so...
What's your timeline?
Zoning on this would not be, I wouldn't, I would request a public hearing in May for this, so I'll be, next two weeks, I'll be back requesting a public hearing next month for this. Although all the paperwork is done, it's on a May timeline then after that. We will have to do all the engineering, we will be back for subdivision. The layout will generally be as it's shown there. That's not going to change. Couple of years before you see anything, I mean, it's just, I don't know that this, how fast this is actually going to go, since this is a completely new product, new, you know, we have these guys building it. I mean, I don't know if you know Josh, but he builds all custom homes, that's all he does. John inspects his homes all the time, so Ron's coming up with a completely new product for this, too. Subject, obviously, the town council approval ultimately, so that is going to be the request for the zoning. And in your package, you'll find you have the notice of public hearing, you have the zoning commitment, you have the planned unit development guidelines, you have the drawings, you have all of the product types, you'll have all that in the packet that's required.
Questions?
Along with written commitment on the fire station parcel, yes.
I know, the only thing I got, me and Mike were looking at this Baltimore. You know, we have that main that stops right there at Providence Bank. We also have an eight-inch that's running right down Black Orpold that stops.
Isn't there one that's supposed to run down Calumet, though?
Stops right after the bank.
I thought, and I could be wrong, but didn't St. John Commons have to run a main all the way down?
They came in from the backside off of Blue Sky Court.
They did, so they didn't run the main down Calumet?
The main is on the opposite side of the street. It's on Providence's side, but they tied in off of an eight-inch off of Blue Sky and took it through Blue Sky. Blue Sky is Armani Builders, the little section right between Saddle Creek and St. John Commons.
So, we'll have a main on the east side of Calumet. Like I said, we haven't gotten into the engineering yet.
Yeah, but that was one thing me and Mike were talking about, is this, hopefully he knows that eight-inch off Black Orpold, we want slung in there some way to put that a loop.
Well, there's no question we'll do that, but, you know, when we get to the design process and subdivision, we'll make sure that that's looped according to how the town wants it.
Okay.
This is just simple zoning requests, not, when we subdivide, that's when we get into all the water mains and everything. But it's good to know that because when we start doing that, I'll make sure everybody knows that we need to make sure that main needs to be connected.
Yeah, because Greystone came off the north side of it, across.
Okay.
They didn't run it down, and then they tied in from the backside, so...
Okay. No, that's, that's, that's fine. We never have a problem making any connectivity with the system because you have to. We'll wait there, maybe see you guys. Do I need to do another study session, or? If you want me back, let me know, I'm not opposed to it. It's a pretty, once you, when you get your package, it's pretty straightforward, but if the Plan Commission would like me back before the May, the end of May, I would be more than happy to come back.
Okay. We'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item D, 9251 Cardell Drive, conceptual presentation for a one-lot subdivision and to discuss potential waivers.
Yes. How you doing, Brian Van Ryan? Just, nice to meet you. Just looking at this lot for a single-family residence and looking at a couple waivers on sidewalks. If you look on the south part of the property line, there's existing row of existing 30-year-old pine trees and a few younger ones that are sitting right about 30 feet off the actual property line, which is in the street. I don't know if you can pull up the Google survey or GIS map, but it shows it faintly on here. Property line is basically going into the street, mid-street on Cardell and into 93rd. So 30, 30-foot setback on the south line is kind of where the tree line existing is. And then there's a bunch of utility boxes that are NIPSCO on the corner of the southeast corner of the property. So we're looking, and then down Cardell, there are no sidewalks in there, so we were kind of looking for a waiver on sidewalks there and along 93rd. Really, there's no sidewalks until Continental, all the way on the east side, and there's nothing, really, anything, till you hit Illinois, maybe. There's a few sidewalks, maybe on Preserve, but that's all the way on the south side. That's kind of the waivers we were looking at for sidewalks. Position of the residence would be more towards the north side. There's existing, I don't know if they filled it with black dirt on the north side of that property, but there's kind of a hump in the property. If you have any history on that, we'd love to know it. That's kind of what we're here for, just to kind of go over, single-family residents on that lot. And asking for a waiver on the sidewalk requirement on Cardell and 93rd Street.
Is that the only waiver request, would be the sidewalk?
Yeah, and I think the right-of-ways are still, unless there's something changing in the right-of-ways, is it still 30 feet on 93rd? I talked to Torringa, and that's kind of what they were saying, that it could go to But I didn't see anything above 50. So the actual one-lot subdivision will shrink the actual existing property because it'll not encompass Cardell or part of 93rd Street, which is kind of interesting.
I would need to double-check. It would depend on what we have that road classified as and the front yard dedication requirement by ordinance. I don't want to give you the wrong answer on the floor.
Yeah, I mean, there's plenty of room on that lot for a single-family. It's really the NIPSCO and the trees, the existing trees using that ordinance, I think you're allowed to... Ashley, you can kind of, was there something in the ordinance about existing trees and landscape where you could?
It allows for a floating building line from 25 to 40 feet for a front yard setback and to preserve existing trees as much as possible.
Yeah, ideally, we'd like to keep, they're nice, end of blocks. The bigger issue is the NIPSCO. There's like three or four big boxes right on the corner there, right at that 30-foot setback off the existing property line, which comes in about, maybe 20 feet off the curb or edge of street right now.
All right, any questions, comments?
Can you help me out here just for a second?
Sure.
Here's, did you say you want to keep the trees, but if we could exempt you from putting a sidewalk there, is that correct?
We don't want to have a sidewalk there, we don't see the...
But you, you don't want the trees, or you do want...
No, we do want the trees, yeah.
But you don't want a sidewalk there?
Well, it doesn't really tie into anything. And all the existing homes to the east and west are all older subdivisions, nothing new is going to go in there.
That you know of.
The newest thing is Continental.
The only thing that you know of. I guess I'm seeing, and that's the historical part about from township to town, that townships don't have sidewalks.
Yeah, let's see, it's a couple of things with it. One, I got, there's NIPSCO lines going down the street on 93rd there in that 30-foot setback, and the tree rows right there, so there's two conflicting things right off the bat for a sidewalk. And then it really doesn't tie in anything. It's kind of an island, so to speak.
Ultimately, when the subdivision comes in, it will be a Plan Commission decision to approve or deny the waivers, just for the board, and I'm not sure when the subdivision went through, but there was a subdivision that was a little bit further down 93rd by White Oak that came in with similar requests, and the Plan Commission at that time did not grant those waivers. We do have in our subdivision control ordinance, if the waivers are granted in lieu of, we do have a fee in lieu of sidewalks, and I believe that goes into a non-revertive fund, but again, I need to double-check the wording on the ordinance on that one. So those are all potential options that will be in front of the Plan Commission when a one-lot subdivision comes in front.
We're just trying to finalize, we have a contract on the property, and I just think it's silly to put a sidewalk, that's just me.
Well, that was a similar consideration for the Little Rascals property, though, too, where we gave a waiver for...
One street, but not the other.
In front of the property, but not going up and down on...
Right, we gave it for, we gave it for her, but not for the other.
Correct.
Yeah, because if you had to do a sidewalk here, and you're, there's nothing tying in here, but your 30-foot setback line is here, right on the trees. So then you put a sidewalk over here if you're going to maintain the trees. It's just, it doesn't tie in. I just don't see the point of it. That's, I would request a waiver and see if I can get support tonight on how you feel about that.
I know the only thing is, is just west of there, there's that huge property that's...
That's going to be sitting there for another 10, 20 years.
If you don't own it, you never know who's going to buy it.
Ashley, that lot that was near White Oak was in the same predicament. There were no other sidewalks, and yet the rest of the homes did not have sidewalk, but they, they made the same request and it was denied. I'm just pointing that out. And they had to put an eight-foot sidewalk along 93rd.
That is, that is correct. That is, John has more knowledge of that property than I do, as that property came in when I was, before I was with the town.
Yeah, that was the Idaginburg property.
They're doing the five along Hilltop and the eight along 93rd, because both the waivers got denied for that.
So, okay. So you're thinking 93rd, you might want to have a sidewalk.
That house had it on both sides, both Hilltop and 93rd.
Are you sure Hilltop had one? I don't think they had one.
Hilltop does not have sidewalks, but that corner house will have the sidewalk to nowhere going south down Hilltop.
Yeah.
When, by the time they did get occupancy.
I mean, I'm just pointing out, it just seems silly. I'm an architect, I'm a designer, I just, it's... Look, Sherivale made me put a sidewalk in a similar situation on another property, and it went into a creek, and then they said, well, put a dead-end sign there. I'm like...
I think the sentiment with the board has changed where, you know, a decade ago, everybody kind of agreed with your, your thoughts, where it's never going to connect, it's never going to connect. But now, we're kind of seeing where if you get 100 feet here, 100 feet there, now if the town wants to connect, they're just filling in the dots to dots versus doing an entire project of sidewalk.
I get it, but, these are all existing homes, so what are you going to do with these homes here? Is the town going to pay for the sidewalk?
Right, but if the town ever did a sidewalk project, now you've provided, say, 200 feet...
I'll give you the access to it.
And we...
Why should I put it in?
We're putting ourselves in a position, what the town's thinking, but the reality is, I agree with you that sidewalks kind of start to, we have to get them implemented and supported. And I, and I do understand your side, sir, too, but we're trying to cut, I feel that even when I moved into this town, that there's a community-type of atmosphere, walk-around area atmosphere. We, I know we have trails, but the sidewalks are very important, especially on 93rd. You're gonna, we're going to start to see a lot of issues if we don't attend to those things.
Yeah, I don't deny sidewalks are a bad thing. I just think it's...
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't quite hear you.
If the town would put in a project for sidewalks, I could understand that, or see a future plan of sidewalks, I could understand why you'd want it, but there's nothing...
Our partner master plan actually does call for connectivity and sidewalks and trails to be installed whenever feasible.
Right. Okay, but down Cardell, you're still going to require it. That's kind of what I got to know, because it's all money.
I think the only difference I see in this project versus the Hilltop one is, Hilltop goes back and goes to a park and ultimately connects to Alcott and Homestead Acres and all the areas south of there, whereas Cardell is a dead end. So that would be...
True.
A difference. If, if we were going to give a waiver on Cardell, I think that would be the, the big difference in my mind was that if you run north on Cardell, you run into a wooded dead end where it'll likely never go through to the other part of Cardell that you access off of Forest Drive, off Patterson.
And that's, you know, that, that would basically...
Ashley, can you drag it down so we can see the end of Cardell, maybe zoom out a little bit? Yeah, so Cardell dead ends there, and there's forests with water and everything between there, and then it picks up off of Forest, which that leaves it, so I don't think it's ever feasible to connect that with the way the ground is through there.
And there's no existing sidewalk down here on Cardell?
No.
None of the homes on Cardell have.
It's a dead end.
Right.
So, to be on the safe side, would you be just 93rd sidewalk, but then, you know, it's going to start sooner or later.
Right.
I would, you know, I don't want to be the one saying, yeah, well, let's let him go, because as it is, people are really not beginning to say, well, there's, they want and they need and...
Yeah, no, I understand, I just...
So, I, I would, the, the, right there, the sidewalk on 93rd, we cannot do anything about it. I mean, I would...
But you want the three, want the trees to stay, right?
But you want the trees to stay.
Well, that and the NIPSCO boxes are right smack in there. I don't know if you can zoom in, Ashley, but... And there's a bunch of them. It's, it's pretty ugly. They're all right here.
Yeah, I see, I know.
So I don't know where, you know, zigzagging around at all. So, I don't know where, you know, that one's going, zigzagging around at all.
Just kind of makes it a little awkward, but I think that answers my questions, I guess, for now.
From my perspective, it's an easier sell for a waiver on Cardell. 93rd is the one that's causing, I think, probably some uncomfortableness, which is though you would prefer. I, I get, I get the disconnect. So, I'm only hesitating about committing, 'cause I kind of want to drive past there and look at it, though, too, and, and just...
Yeah, right.
And just see, you know, and get, to get the lay of the land, because, you know, further to the east, right?
Alcott has some on there. Alcott on ninety, going down 93rd, there is some that's hidden. There's, there's arborides that sit over them about...
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it's somewhere, is it right there, John?
Yeah, it'd be just, just east of Alcott on the, on the south side. But nothing to the west of Alcott.
Yeah, it kind of gets, the topography over there gets kind of a little funky. Once you end at Continental, it gets kind of a little crazy for sidewalks.
And the topography where the trees are, is it high?
No, it's kind of low.
Kind of low.
No, I was talking about Continental, it gets kind of high and kind of funky over there. Do you guys have any history on that property? I'd love to know it.
Not really, other than driving by for the last eighteen or nineteen years. I did see, they did do like a fill-wanted, so I think that's what, on the north end, I remember there were...
Is that what the hump is?
There were a bunch of moguls where they got dirt from somewhere, and they just kind of spread them out with a lawn tractor and a rake and seeded over it, or...
Nice.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's good to know.
But we don't have any, like, soil sample or anything like that?
No, no, I just didn't know if you knew of any flooding there or anything like that.
No, I just, I just know, I remember before, they, they were bringing in fill, you know, just random truckloads here and there, and then spreading them out.
Okay.
I think it was, it was actually like maybe half on the home to the north.
Yeah, you can kind of see the shadow line of it.
Yeah, and then they kind of went south, 'cause I think at one time, the same guy owned both...
Right.
Parts, so I think he kind of started on his and went on to the other with the fill.
What's your water table height there, is it?
That I don't know. That's kind of what I gotta dig into a little bit. I was looking at all the rain here, and I was like, eh, so far, it's, it wasn't puddling much, so...
Looks primarily flat.
Yeah, there's a drainage on the east side of that property, kind of a swell that That's all I have.
All right. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five, adjournment. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Vogel, second by Mr. Combs. Take a law, in favor?